Not been done, no. It's covered under this grant.
Yeah, yeah.
Portions reimbursable. We have a proposal from our engineer. They're ready to start working, but no work can start before March 15th under this grant contract. So we're going to hit the ground running on the 15th.
And does it have a completion date?
Yeah, it's in the 2020s, I think. It'll be long done.
You'll be done with that, yeah, sure.
The cover will be done. I don't know about me, but I can give you the exact date, but I think it's a five-year window, so, yeah.
But we're not running against the clock.
We're not, no, but we want to get moving. March 14th, 2023.
So it's not going to have significant closures the way the one on Station 11?
Well, we can't. As everyone probably knows, there's only one way in and one way out of that neighborhood. So we, one of the coordination issues will be keeping a lane open, of course. Not that it's a heavily traveled road. It's not like a main thoroughfare, but there'll have to be a lane open, I'm sure.
Great to get this grant.
Do we have easements?
We have easements. We have draft easements with the two private property owners to the west of Hudson View Park. We have to finalize those agreements, but part of what they did when we submitted the grant application is they committed in writing to executing those agreements, and they know exactly what they look like. And they're both, they're as anxious as we are, as you'd expect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. I'll read this resolution. Resolve to approve the grant agreement with the Department of Environmental Conservation to provide $299,317 for a climate smart communities grant for the Hudson View Park Colbert Replacement Project, and further resolve to authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the provisions of the grant. So I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Hold it there. Close. Thank you. All right. The next thing on the agenda is number nine. Approval of removal of parking space adjacent to 16 North Astor Street. So this was at the last meeting. We discussed that. See, Lucinda is back, the architect for that project. And this is just the resolution to follow that. Say, do you have any comments?
I think we asked last meeting if you had an estimate as to how many cars were on the street from the office space that was currently being used in terms of a total number of savings of cars.
Actually, I understood your, should I say? I understood the question to be different, which was what was the potential, what were the number of spaces we would be required to have if it was office occupancy? And I did do that calculation, and it's 30. We have over, currently over 6,000 square feet of office space, and you're required to have one for every 200 square feet of usable office space. So we are, by proposing the two apartments on the two upper floors, we lower the requirement to only three spaces being required. And, you know, it has a really positive impact on the location.
Thank you.
I actually have a photo that you might want to see. I'm sorry, I forgot to bring it, but I have a photograph of the photograph, which is really interesting. It shows the building in 1857. With the retail space that was there in 1857.
It's close to the. It's a horse, too, wow.
Actually, it's.
No, I turned it around, so. With the elevator, was it a green elevator in the back?
Yes, that's no longer there.
No.
But it's kind of the original windows, and it looks like it's office space above that.
It's the drive.
It's not close enough.
Marked off.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. Interesting.
Does the Historical Society have that?
No. Yeah, you could, I can make sure the Historical Society has that picture.
I don't, they might, but you probably found it in. No, we actually have a newspaper copy, newspaper print copy of it.
Okay.
It's a good thing it's a white horse, so we didn't show up.
If you want to send it on to either Larry or me, we'll send it on. They might have it if it was a newspaper thing, so, but that's very cool. Thanks for sharing that. Is there any other questions or comments about the one parking space that will be logged? Do you want, yeah, please, you can say, yes.
Hi, I'm Chris LaMolino, and I'm in the building right next door.
Right.
At 20 North Astor Street.
Uh-huh.
And actually, I've been here before to discuss the incredible difficulty of parking in that area. And I know the board has done its best to grapple with many different scenarios, trying to cure the problem over the last few years. Particularly overnight parking is an issue. And I would just say that the plan is proposed to remove one public parking spot comes on top of various other things that have happened over the last few years. When the newly constructed building on the corner was built, the public lost two parking spaces there. And then when the other place opened up, there were several spaces which, for all intensive purposes, for many years had been parked in by the public, which were then relegated to the private use of that company. Now, what's happening is 16 North Astor has a plan to, instead of the existing offices on the second floor of the building, put two housing units. The offices, which of course have been there many years, involve people who go home at night after business hours, and they take their cars with them, so they don't contribute to overnight parking issues. Whereas two housing units, if it's a husband and a wife, and they both have a car, or maybe they even have a grown kid with them who has a car, could easily have not only one car per unit, but perhaps two, or even three per unit. So providing three off-site space, off-street spaces only for the use of the people who live in the building will still potentially contribute to increased competition for street parking. So I would just like to suggest that either the board wait until the product itself is approved, if it is, to deal with the loss of this additional parking space for the public, or disallow it. I know there's an argument that at some time in the past, there was a driveway there, but I've been here for 20 years, and I've never seen one. It must have been much longer ago. It must have been, who knows?
Do you know when it was?
Forty, fifty, sixty years ago. So surely, it's a defense claim by now if it existed. I don't know the legal underpinnings of the claim. There may be some. But it must have been a considerable period of time ago.
So one quick thing, just to clear this up. The resolution that the board is contemplating tonight, I think it says what you just asked them to do, which is to not remove the space until the project's approved by the planning board?
Yeah.
I'm assuming it is.
I'm just curious as to why it's before the board now at all.
Right, well.
I can address that if you'd like.
Yeah, sure.
Because we can't actually have the project approved by the planning board unless we have the parking space. So that's actually what they refer to as a threshold issue, that if we have to have three parking, actually two and a half, so three parking spaces to have the two apartments. So if we can't get access to those parking spaces inside the building, then there's no project. And then it could, then, you know, the new owner would have no recourse but to turn it into offices again and rent it out. And she would then, because it wasn't that before, she wouldn't have to provide any parking at all.
I understand.
So it's a threshold issue.
Yes, but I would just argue that this is a net loss of public parking in the downtown and not an advantage to public parking, as has been portrayed. Because as we can see, if there are two housing units, people need overnight parking rather than the offices, which do not. And there could be potentially not only two, but three or four, or five or six cars involved with the housing units. So the number of spaces, which is three, will not really bear the traffic, and it will increase and further burden the problems of overnight parking in the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Is there any other comment from our board? Well, I'll go ahead and, I mean, I understand the issue, and I think we will look down at the area and see the one angled spot that's referred to. And I know we are tackling the entire schema of parking, which is, you think, and I know it's been like two years, but believe me, people have not stopped thinking about your problem or the problems of many neighborhoods, and we are sensitive to that. I still, you know, personally feel this is an appropriate step to take at this point for this project. So I'll make the motion, and I'll read the resolution. Yeah, go ahead.
But thank you for adding your perspective to this conversation. We are, it's very rarely neat, you know, oh, this is good, this is bad. You know, it's a question of balance. Again, we're not the planning board. But you make a very good point that this is not necessarily just one additional car in the street, but several.
Okay. This is the resolution approving elimination of parking space at 16 North Astor Street. Whereas Lucinda Stroll, the architect representing Jason Striano and Julia Steinmetz, the owners of 16 North Astor, requested the elimination of one on-street parking space on North Astor Street in order to reactivate an existing curb cut in front of 16 North Astor. And whereas Ms. Stoll advised the Board of Trustees that the curb cut formally gave access to a driveway into the interior of 16 North Astor. And whereas the owners of 16 North Astor currently have an application before the planning board for renovation of the building, and the application includes a proposal to create three interior parking spaces inside 16 North Astor. And whereas the Board of Trustees determined that the elimination of one public parking space is outweighed by the advantage of eliminating three cars from parking on the public street, now therefore it be resolved to approve the removal of one parking space at the curb cut in front of 16 North Astor, provided the three interior parking spaces are constructed as proposed and subject to site development plan approval by the planning board. So I will make a motion. And.
Second.
Would someone like to second that?
I'll second. In favor?
Paul, are you vote for the rest of you?
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay. Any opposed? And thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
Perhaps we could just have the record reflect us. They say that the elimination of one public parking space is outweighed by the advantage of limiting three cars from parking, potentially outweighed because it may not be quite so simple, as you point out. The math may be a little bit more complicated.
Yes, except then we have to add the caveat that because it's an existing office space, being converted to residential is a significant reduction in potential parking requirements. Right?
Not for overnight.
Not for overnight, but for out of daytime. I don't know that there really is an overnight problem in some of those spaces, like this whole runoff.
Oh, I see. This doesn't address it's overnight. Okay.
Yeah, this is overnight.
It just says one public parking space eliminated, three cars. Okay.
Okay, so Fire Department. Anthony?
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
So between you and Brenda and your trusty assistant.
Assistant Joe Chalmers with us tonight.
So I haven't been.
Probably be his budget.
I haven't been hearing from you lately because you've been so busy putting your budget together?
Yes. That's exactly.
Actually, the Fire Department did not come with any additional requests this year.
Why not?
Why not?
We're saving up for the big one.
Oh, yeah.
You got to have Joe come with that.
Capital.
I'll save that one on me.
Do capital things, you know. But so either Brenda or Anthony, whoever wants to start, fill us in on what you've been thinking and doing.
Well, as I said, there was no additional request this year, so the current budget has been sufficient for the department to be running. The only increase was really for some, to staff at the current levels that they're experiencing will be an increase of $3,439. So once I scheduled out that number of hours, times the rate of pay, there were some increases approved last year. There was additional need for salaries. If you look on the first page of the computer printout, it gives a breakout of the labor on the first line. So you can see the requirement for the officers stipends, the training officer, a day man, and then the fire inspector. So it's an increase in that line, but a modest increase in the overall departmental percent increase. It's an increase compared to the whole department of 1.34%. And as a percent of the total village budget, 0.02%.
Obviously, our salaries are not firefighter salaries. They're the fire inspector, training officer, chief small stipend, and the two guys who do the day work and running fires cleanup. So your firefighting services, your emergency protection is still free of charge for a person.
We are so aware and grateful. We are so grateful.
The remaining of our budget, we spend on maintenance, upgrades to some of the equipment, the smaller ticket items, turnout gear, fans, consumables, and training, so.
Got some grant money, too, secured.
We got $10,000 from Avenanti this year to upgrade our boat lift, which doubled its speed, so we can deploy faster to the river, which is nice. The weighting went from 24 inches a minute to 40. The weighting, the time is significant. And we spend our money on required maintenance and certifications on our equipment. The agency has put out requirements on us to test things. A lot of our gear is tested and/or cleaned and/or certified annually, so a significant portion of the budget goes to taking care of that, those items.
And you've been recruiting, because we've seen some names of new members come by.
We've done pretty well. A bunch of new members of the community have reached out to us and asked to join. We have lost a few as well.
I noticed that.
But it's good to have new faces and some new energy every once in a while to keep us going, so it's working.
You must be doing something right. People want to join this.
We're trying. We're trying. Significant time commitment, but everyone that's joined has pretty much stayed on.
Do you add it up, the years you have spent? How many hours have you spent doing this?
Yeah, we haven't done that report for you this year.
You personally?
I think it's 26 years, so.
That's amazing.
But we'll provide the other report to you soon about man hours and training hours and the number of, I think it turned out to be days, like 50 days of man hours that we spent on calls last year. So we will provide that report to you again this year.
So at a 1.34% departmental increase, I think that's. And I'm sure there's a lot of discussion here among my colleagues. Any questions?
Just being sure that your equipment and training needs are being met.
Yeah, they are. They are, for the time being.
Yeah.
Until the next requirement comes along. They're cleaning up the standards again and make us get rid of equipment or have it tested additionally, then we'll have to come back and request more funds, but.
Didn't we approve, did we, am I misremembering? Did we approve the capital budget for a new fire?
Oh, the capital budget, yeah.
For the new truck?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So when it comes in, does that have any additional expenses in terms of getting it, you know, operational or whatever?
The equipment would be transferred from the existing truck.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, okay.
So hose and fans and hand tools, radios, that all goes from the old engine to the new one. And any changes, you know, we're planning on getting a new fan and a couple of new items, but they're not, they would be within the normal operating budget. That equipment that changes is something we keep up to date anyway.
Yeah.
We replace as needed to begin with, so there's no point to, no advantage to buying all new.
Yeah.
It's pretty, it's up to date for now. We can move it and transfer it.
So I guess things like hoses have a lifetime. Is that a usable lifetime?
Yeah, they're tested annually. And when they fail is when they come out of service.
And what happens to the old fire engine?
Joe wants to buy it and turn it to a pizza truck. Well, there's a used market for fire trucks, so.
I was just wondering, you know, if that's another, right?
It's not a tremendous amount of money that we can get for it, but there will be, we will sell it.
No Craig's.
Somewhere out that, you know, does significantly less volume than, you know, we'll look at that truck as a brand new piece of apparatus.
And as an undersized garage area to store.
And then that comes back to the village as a sale. It comes into a revenue. Not directly goes back to the Fire Department. It comes back to general village funds.
That's good, yeah.
So we haven't even started that. So we don't even know what it would bring in at this point. But a truck, truck should come in late October, November is what the manufacturer's telling us.
Get the checkbook ready.
June, I said, for start natural building. June for, you know, camp work and the, be started chassis. And then, you know, the actual body part is a pretty quick process. I think it's in the factory for maybe a month to just put the body down, you know, and then it's painted and lettered and whatnot. And then they send a representative to come and train our pump operators and drivers with new equipment for, you know, three days, I believe, three-day course. You know, which our guys would get, donate their time and come and, you know, to take time to learn the new engine and how it operates. And then as we get it switched over, eventually put it to service in the following weeks, you know. Do we have a name for this truck yet? It's MJ178 is what its official designation is.
That's what it's replacing, right? An unofficial name, please?
I don't want it to be known as Joe's truck because if it's less than, less than, you know, the chance of coming into London, I don't want it to be known as Mr. Chee, they got that.
Just pizza truck.
There's a high demand for collectors with the whole fire trucks.
Well, I'll just reiterate that we're appreciative of the entire department, but especially all the chiefs who spend so much extra time and are dedicated to getting, you know, budgeting done and to keeping our bills. Yes, thank you.
All righty, so.
You guys have another meeting, Andrew?
I'm thinking of bad things to say.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
I don't have these on his way out, but I'm sure I'll see everyone again.
Okay.
I'm going to excuse myself also.
Oh, yeah, you're going to another meeting. We could do anything now. All right, we have board reports. Mark, do you have anything?
No, we'll keep it simple tonight. I think there's just a lot of stuff that is floating around. Still looking into a little bit of the. I have to talk with Larry a little bit about some training materials for leaf blowers and stuff like that. So that has to be. It has to be worked on, but beyond that, nothing else to say. I will just mention, people might have seen some activity in front of the Rec Center, the IK Benjamin Community Center. They took advantage of the winter break to do some work. On Monday, there were shrubs that were removed from the front and east side of the building for new landscaping planned for the spring. On Tuesday, an old oil tank that was found fairly recently was removed.
That oil tank was buried?
There was a diesel oil tank on the side street in front.
Oh.
I'm not sure how they found it. I don't remember how they even found it, but it's gone.
It's gone.
And then they did some window replacement on Wednesday. So that is all done over the course of the winter break. And I'll just mention an official notification of some of the meetings going on. There's a Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday, February 21st, 7:00 p.m. at the Rec Center. Arlington Woods Committee has three dates for upcoming events. Saturday, April 14th is a trail cleanup and awareness day. Spring Fest 2018, they'll be participating, and they'll have a wine and cheese open house at the Nature Center. That date is to be determined. And the Woods Committee will be meeting Thursday, March 15th at the Ohio Nature Center. The Community Advisory Board will be meeting on Tuesday, March 13th, 8:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. I think that's enough meetings for. I did have one thing I just forgot that I promised MJ was going to be here tonight, but couldn't make it. So she was going to remind people that the food scrap waste recycling program is in full swing, and you can bring your food scraps to, the collection point is actually at the farmer's market at Main Street School on, I guess, the farmer's market is this Saturday?
Yes, it would be.
So, because we've skipped a week, right. So look for some, one there with a green garbage tote and materials and a sign probably saying recycling. And I think also you can buy the recycling containers and biodegradable bags and such at that location. Or there may be some still available through Village Hall
Yeah, I saw one.
in Larry's Assistance Office, and.
Oh, two are up there. Yeah, at least two.
Yeah, so I just wanted to remind people to come do that. And if you're recycling on your own, you can take it to Veterans Park in Greenberg, where there's a 24-hour drop-off point for your materials.
Very good. All your bones, your turkey bones.
No bones.
Innocent bones, any kind of bones. Okay, and I just wanted to say about the park to add to the. Sinek Hudson Park was gorgeous yesterday. It was not, I mean, the weather had a little bit to do with it, but it was so lovely to walk around that park. Everybody was smiling. There were young kids. There were seniors. There were many people, so pass the word on that. The community and everyone, there were people playing basketball. There were, it was just wonderful. Okay, so Highway Department. Winter Storm Number 11, in contrast, was on the 17th and the 18th. Sunday were eight inches. So quickly we forget. So maintenance of winter equipment, this is all what the Highway Department is doing. There was a collapsed catch basin on Hamilton Road near South Broadway. I saw a lot of, I'm pretty sure I saw some trucks there. Was that the Con Edison trucks there?
There was a gas main, sure, too, I think.
Repair damaged infrastructure to the gas pump number one at DPW Complex and filling potholes. The Water Department, Jim Englishby reports. They've been reading water meters, doing the winter maintenance of the Water Department facilities. Updated the village backflow control program. control program, repaired a valve box at the library parking lot, met with ELQ for the pre-construction meeting, and you heard about this at the last meeting, the low-service transfer tank job. Wayne Martin calibrated the flow meter and tank level charts on both the Mountain Road and Riverview Road water storage tank. And they also assisted the DPW with no removal, now this one is, space-age alarms, I guess that's the name of the, is that the name of the company, Brenda? The space-age alarms are upgrade-
I've got a picture of the VED.
Okay. Alarm systems on all the village water facilities, okay. And there's, there are always things, of course, going on in the theater, and of course the, the farmer's market is happening on Saturday. As far as Black History Month, there's been, there have actually been quite a few things in the village, but on Saturday, February 24th, this is the play, it's a, it's a reading, it's not, it's a stage, but it's, and it's a, it's a, it's a well-known play called For Colored Girls Who Have Considered Suicide When The Rainbow Is Enough. That's at 7:30 Saturday, February 24th, with a live cast.
Yes, yeah, I think much the Fire Department would much be preparing a budget to provide for this month. The library's also doing a lot of events to commemorate Black History Month and that easily accessible on their website, there's just so many programs, so please do that, and everything else has been reasonably quiet.
Yes, I went to W E B Du Bois' actually act and out program at the library, it was excellent. Brenda, do you have anything else to share with us?
We had a meeting this week with the company that we've hired to replace our water program. So we had a business-
The water program?
The water program for our billing, so we can have bills that have-
Oh, oh, right.
And also a lot of other, you know, portal for our customers to see their usage, to get an e-bill. So we had a business meeting with them that really was to really configure the program for our, you know, types of billing for our various zones. So it was a very in-depth meeting with them, and also we'll be replacing our tax system, our tax collection, also with the portal, and also our general receiving of all receipts. So that kind of comes in, three various modules that get put in very close together. So that was, was a good meeting, and I don't have an exact date, but we're working towards the, the, hey, there's testing that's required, you know, dual testing to make sure that the programs are working properly, the billing's working. So it'll be a little while, yeah, but it's in the works.
Great, thank you. Okay, anybody have anything else, public comment? Doesn't seem like review of action items. I guess there's no need to review the action items, and if everybody's agreed, I will adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Twenty minutes to time.